I call the meeting to order. I invite you to join me in the invocation.
Oh merciful God, we are thankful this day for all the blessings you have bestowed on us. We are thankful for the resurrection of Jesus Christ our Lord. You have given us the gifts of faith, hope, and love. You strengthen our hopes so that we may continue to walk with you. You deepen our faith so that we may trust that you are with us in all that we do. You show us your love so that we may show others the gifts you have promised to all. Give us the ability to lead, listen, and feel when we make decisions that affect others. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Item number two, consider approval of the March 19th regular session and March 19th closed session minutes.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Have two agenda adjustments. One is to discuss an alleyway project, and the other is to enter a closed session for economic development.
Move approval of the adjustments.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The municipal calendar is in your agenda. Does anyone have any questions?
Just to Christina, the COG meeting next week, if you or someone, I think you're going, if you will send out an email to all of us that might be going just to remind us in what time we need to leave and where we need to meet, and not take the van that doesn't have the air conditioner. Thanks.
Further? Item number four, ordinance 1806, to consider changes to the urban archery ordinance. This ordinance has been discussed multiple times. We delayed it to the night to see if anyone had any further contacts that they would like to contact council. I don't know about the rest of you, I did have contacts both ways, predominantly against, but both ways. Council, have any discussion before we move forward?
I too had folks reach out to me, split most, but mostly against wanting to leave at five acres.
Same thing here.
I'll entertain however council wants to proceed.
Move approval of ordinance 1806.
Second.
Have a motion to approve ordinance 1806 by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion?
Well, by approving that ordinance, are we lowering it to two acres?
You're lowering it to two acres, plus you're removing the 250-foot restriction from a property.
That's what I thought, okay.
I was, I feel like I gotta say, I went back and forth on this thing a number of times, and finally, I tried to, I had very few calls. I had one call, one email. I mean, I was, and I've heard, you know, all the people during this process, and I finally went back to the purpose of doing it, supposedly to reduce the population of deer in the city. I heard a number of knowledgeable people say that was the thing to do. Also, I went back and looked at the survey of the 22 municipalities, and I think that's, I believe that's about a third of the ones in the state, and of those, there were five that had more than two acres. The rest of them were two acres or none. I mean, it was like 16 out of 22 were there, and only two of those five, or three of the five, I think, required five acres. So, that's why I'm still, I'm gonna have to vote for it.
All of you, I'm sure, got the couple of emails last week, and there were several concerns, but the predominant concern, basically, I saw was the cleanup afterwards, not allowing the carcasses to lay out there, be able to recover the carcasses.
Well, I got a question about that, too. Is that because of the urban archery ordinance?
No, that's basically anything.
That's right.
I know, how do we, how do we enforce that?
Well, there's a state law on it. I mean, we're not gonna adopt anything in conflict with the state law.
But I mean, how do we encourage people to report that kind of thing so we can get it, get it enforced?
And the state law is littering. That's the littering part.
It would be reportable as, as David Rithimer told us standing here, he wants the reports to come to him, 'cause it is his job to follow up on that.
I think the other thing is, when you shoot with a bow, unless you hit it just right, it's gonna take off and go. And that's what I've heard from a couple of people, and I go back to what Mike McCama said, he was the guy that came in and actually asked us to look at this program, and he still steadfastly says that, you know, five acres is fine. He said, you know, I've got no problem with that, that's what we asked for. And, and he's the one who really said, you know, when you shoot one, you don't know where it's gonna go, so you're gonna have to follow, hopefully in town, you've got more of a clear path to look, but that's still, you know, can run as far as maybe 250 yards, so.
Well, to Councilmember Whitley's point, when you look at all the municipalities that participate in this program, I was amazed at how many of them have basically zero restrictions. And if our goal is to reduce the population of deer, you know, we tried it with the five acres over a two-year span, I think it was 13 deer we had harvested. So if our goal is to truly bring down the population of deer, in my opinion, five acres is not working. So we have to, you know, it's, urban archery's a month long, roughly. So I'm in full support of the reducing it to two acres.
But one thing we still have to consider, though, we got other options in addition to just reducing the acreage. You know, we could do preseason and postseason on the urban archery, you know, just, which would give us a larger timeframe. So I would, me personally, I would be more in favor of doing it kind of before the regular season, starting after the regular season end, you know, before we go reducing the acreage.
Mr. Towns, are you saying you're in favor of doing it during the archery season for deer? That's what you're saying, correct?
Yes, sir. You know, I think, I can't remember who told us about that idea that night whenever they were speaking.
It was one of the wildlife officers.
It was wildlife officer. I mean, the season itself is that January, that 30 days, but it could go back to when it's open season.
Mr. Mayor, as all of you know, I've been opposed to this since the beginning, and to me, two acres is just too small a piece of property to have people firing off weapons. It's just too, it's just too small. I went out and looked at two acres, and that's nothing. And I just don't wanna see those bears come flying out of there.
Do we know?
If our goal is to reduce the deer population, we could poison them. I mean, if that's our goal, it'd be a lot, lot more humane than shooting them with an arrow.
And then in our ordinance also, I think it says something about the deer stands and stuff had to be in an elevated state, correct? We do, probably 10-foot high. From some of the communication that we received from our constituents, they sent evidence of some deer stands and tents and things of that nature that's ground level.
Right.
You know, so, I don't think we complying with it now.
But one of the things I want to consider, too, is, in the city, how many five-acre tracts of land do we have for people that want to participate in urban archery? I don't know.
Or who do not want their vegetation destroyed?
Thank you.
Or who don't want the probability and possibility of hitting one, or being hit by one. Your Honor, I think there's a motion on the tape.
Before we proceed, I have an unusual situation here. We've passed the unannounced delegations, but I have an unannounced delegation that has come in wanting to speak on urban archery. This is not a public hearing, but we do allow them during unannounced delegations. Does anyone have a problem with allowing them to come forward?
No.
Mary Louie Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My husband Jim and I have lived in Alamo at 634 Yadkin Street for 21 years. We live just three blocks from the hospital, three blocks from the emergency room. There's a wooded area beside us, and also in front of us, that the city mows. It's a type of, I guess it's an easement of some sort. There are deer that habitat in, on those two pieces of property. These areas, there are seven deer, we count them from time to time, and there are seven deer. One day when I was talking with Martha Sue, it was daylight, and they were right out there in the back, right in the backyard, in the natural area. They live in the uncleared area. There is an, an area where there are reeds that need to be cleared by the city, maybe this would make them go away. And our lot is too small to even be included in the urban archery, even if it's down to two acres. We don't really wanna kill the deer, but what can we do? They eat our flowers and our shrubs. We ask to be protected from the deer, and if we have the deer now, are we going, going to have coyotes like have come in even to Charlotte? Are we going to have those coming in? And I've heard from friends who live on the fringes of the city that they have that problem. So we support the lowering of the acreage. We support that, but it would not even affect us. But we live just three blocks from the hospital. So what can we do?
I'm gonna refer you to wildlife. That's the only thing I can do is refer you to wildlife, 'cause they're the experts in this. I don't know if they have any trapping reservations. They have trapped and transported a lot of deers out of this area up into the Cherokee Indian Reservation. I don't know if that's an option or not. So I would refer you to David Rithimer, who is the local wildlife officer.
Okay, well, we, we'd like for it to be sooner than later.
Okay. Call him and see what he recommends.
Okay. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, how do you wish to proceed? Any more discussion before I call for the vote? All those, sorry?
The motion as it stands now is the one acre in elimination.
Two acres.
I mean, I'm sorry, the two acres and the 250.
Right.
Could we tag on? I'm with Dexter. I like the idea of having more availability to hunt. And it, would we, could that be tagged on? I don't know if you wanna do that.
Are you saying you want to pass what we have, plus in addition, allow archery in the, in the regular state archery season? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. I mean, I, you know, I agreed with what the wildlife officer said, that made perfectly good sense to me.
If you're wanting to make that a substitute motion.
I would be happy to make that substitute motion, that we would allow the bow hunting in relationship to the, the regular bow hunting season.
So adopt 1806, and with that amendment?
With that amendment.
Is that what we were doing?
Have a substitute motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
With the, still with the two acres?
Yes, he's recommending adopt it 1806 as presented tonight, just to add the extra time of the regular archery season.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, you're gonna vote separately, or is that just the one motion?
I have a substitute motion first, so we'll handle the substitute motion first, and we'll see where the first one's relevant or not at that point.
So, to recapture two acres, 250 feet out, and there would be bow hunting not only in the month?
Urban archery.
Urban archery, but we're also gonna say in the?
It's in the fall when they have a state-approved archery season.
Okay, state-approved, okay.
Six weeks.
I don't know, but six, eight weeks, I'm not sure exactly what the dates are. I can't tell you that.
And that, I think it changes.
Further discussion? All right, I'm gonna call for a vote on the substitute motion. All those in favor say aye, and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The substitute motion is approved, so that makes the first motion irrelevant. Moving on to new business, consider adoption of ordinance 1807 to establish Monza Drive as a stop street at its intersection with Pond Street. Mr. Ferris, as I read this ordinance, I understand to establish Monza Drive, it does not mention Pond Street in particular, removing that stop sign, but it does say something about any conflicts. Are we covered there, or do we need to mention Pond Street specifically?
So what this does is, the way our ordinance is worded, is that it establishes the through street at the intersection, so we're covered there with creating the change we talked about. Usually, we'd have something that's also, in addition to the creation, is the removal or changing of what was there previously. It's not, it's a little bit unusual, but not completely unheard of, you know, we consider how old the city is and how many changes have happened over the years, and when we went back and looked through the current stop intersection, through-street ordinance, that there was no reference to this intersection whatsoever. So there was, had it been there, we would've had to take it out, but there was nothing in the ordinance, so there's nothing to remove at this point. So if the change goes forward, that, as it's written, is all that needs to happen.
Council, how you wish to proceed?
Move approval, adoption of ordinance 1807.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Consider setting a public hearing for April 16th at 7:00 PM to consider adoption of ordinance for the demolition and removal of dilapidated structures. That is a lengthy list that we'll be, we will be discussing that night.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Whitley, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, consider results of banking RFP. We need to entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Hughes.
So move.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion?
Don't walk too far.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. In your agenda, you have a list of the proposals from various banks, with U.A.R.E. Bank being the lowest recommended bank. Mr. Whitley, you were on the committee, do you wanna make any comments?
I think the process went really well. Matt Smith, I think.
He's out there.
He's out there. Did an excellent.
Just a minute before you clarify that. Mr. Bramlett, are you still on a board for them?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Good call.
And I'm no longer employed at Wells Fargo, so I don't have to recuse myself.
Right.
I think, just to tell you, I was at the pre-bid meeting and also the opening of the bids, and I think they did an excellent job, Matt did, in making it as clear as possible so you could compare apples to apples. These things are, I've been involved in a few, but it's been a long time, and they're, can get kinda messy if you don't, aren't real specific what you're asking them to bid on. And they did a good job of going back to clarify, and there were very few questions. Most of the questions at the pre-bid were technical in nature, which is pretty much over my head, but they answered them pretty well, I think, and got back to all the banks. Not sure what you want me to say about this, the numbers made it fairly.
I was amazed at the big difference in the numbers and how much lower U.A.R.E. is than all the other banks.
Yeah, and the way they did it, I guess I can, it's public record, right?
Yeah.
So, it was kind of unusual in a way, because basically, they're paying a set interest rate on the collected balance in the account, and then they're just charging you for the service charges, and then you get the difference. You get the interest over and above the service charges, which is not typically the way they do that. They usually give you an earnings credit to offset, and a lot of times, that's it. You either have a service charge or no service charge, you don't earn interest. So, I was kinda relieved after we went through them that it was kind of clear-cut.
It's pretty clear-cut, even what's there.
Money on that.
I have no idea. I mean, that's, and the one thing that, I mean, that's up for them, up to them to...
I was very amazed, Mr. Bramlett, of the big difference, because we're gonna make money on this, we're, in the past, we've always paid.
One thing that was very helpful, they did go back to clarify that, because, kinda questioned, is that actually, you know, right? And went back and questioned it, and also got each one of the banks to do an actual pro forma, state using the same data for a specific month. So, I mean, that pretty much was, was clear there. So, a lot of times, it can be hard to determine, you know, which one. And I think, I don't know if y'all wanna say anything?
I think it's pretty black and white, myself.
Oh, I think it is, too. I just wanna make sure no one has any questions.
I'd like to make some votes. You worry bank for our banking.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett to approve U.A.R.E. Bank for our banking?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Now, this will not occur overnight. It will take a little bit of time to transfer all this from one bank to another. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I can't come back in yet. You're out of time, I think. That can't be right. Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to go back and think of the, the workshops we've been to. When we buy anything, we have to bid it out, if it's, what, over $40,000, is that the?
There's different levels on, it depends on what, what you're doing. It's different level amounts by state statute.
I would just like to say that depending on that, where we can, let's buy local.
We do, as much as we can.
We do, you just can't by law give preference.
I don't know if we do or not.
You can't give preference by law, and so we have to abide by the law, but we do.
But if you, if you, if you don't put it out for bid, then that means you can go buy it where you want to.
If it's not an informal bid. There's formal bids and informal bids, and that applies to informal bids, too.
But I still say what I do.
I understand.
I stand, okay, thank you, thank you.
Number eight, consider declaring scrap metal accumulation as surplus.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, consideration of a special event permit for the beach blast. If you see in your agenda, it's not blocking off quite as much downtown it has in the past. All their events are basically on Second Street between Main and the alleyway here beside the Old City Hall Annex, is basically where all the events are.
I was concerned about that, because I wonder if you can put in all those children's things and that sort of thing, just on that one block?
Joy says yes.
Okay.
That's our motion.
I think it'd be a test to see, 'cause I, I'm like you, it could be very tight.
Yeah.
So we'll just have to see how it goes this first year. That is the recommendation of the ADDC.
Let's have a good.
And our Parks and Recreation Department.
That's right.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? Does that motion include waiving the fee?
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Okay.
Got a question.
Yes, sir.
A few years ago, when we were in the budget process, we laid out a specific amount of money to help out with this.
That amount is being used to bring in the bands for this project.
Very good, very good.
For this contract.
Thank you, sir.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 10 was a reminder of the photo that we took right before the meeting tonight at 6 o'clock, just for your records. And our agenda adjustments, I don't need a motion on that. Agenda adjustments, number one is, it's an alleyway project that ADDC is working with some of the downtown people to do, between the Falling Rivers Gallery and the back of the La Tida there. They're wanting to put an alleyway project though in there, and clean up that alleyway, do some, do some work in that alleyway, put some overhead lights, which will be LED lights similar to like we do on our trees. And what they want permission to do is to tie into our street tree circuit, which the cost will be very minimal, but we, council does need to approve that, if you're in approval of that. And second, I wanna talk about the private parking, but there's a conflict of interest there, so I need to excuse Councilmember Bramlett.
So move.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'm 137th of the building, this.
So is it just the alleyway, or does it go in behind it, too?
The alleyway project that they're wanting to do is just the alleyway there beside of the Falling Rivers Gallery. But, if council members, a little over a year ago, you gave us permission to work with the property owners about paving those parking lots and trying to improve those alleyways if they were willing to buy the materials on. So if you're willing to proceed, I need the motion to include the lights and tying into the city street tree circuit, plus allowing us to do agreements with property owners to pave that property.
Now, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I know, I know we're talking about going to the Falling Rivers Gallery, but are you talking about going, because that, that alleyway loops all the way around, they're kinda behind the?
The alleyway is only to the back of the Falling Rivers Gallery.
Just the corner.
Falling Rivers Gallery.
Okay.
But the rest of the property is the property we talked about paving earlier.
Okay.
So it'd be behind the Falling Rivers Gallery, in front of the sweet shop, and the alleyway that goes down to First Street.
Behind the sweet shop.
Behind all of those, yeah, behind the sweet shop, but all the other, all those, yes. That's the area we're looking at first, and I need approval to do agreements on that if council's willing to proceed with that.
One other question.
Sure.
When we went through the streetscape, that was part of what they presented to us, was the alleyways and the, making them more aesthetically appealing and usable. Would they be following some of the guidelines?
Yes, they're, they're looking at that, and there's a work, couple of work sessions. Joy, tell me the dates again.
April 14th and April 21st.
They're gonna have, we'll have groups of volunteers down there working to clean up the back of that alley and do some work in there before we do all this. One of the things that council talked about earlier, and we will be working with our utilities, is, is putting those services underground, 'cause they'll have to go underground to put all them lights up and make it look good. So we would be putting all the services underground before any paving occurred. It will, this will be a long process, because there's a lot to do in there, but that's our goal, is to get that done and do all that paving and clean up that area to make it look much better.
Well, hopefully, then, it would be a motivation to do some of the other alleys that we have.
Yes, yes.
Especially when we're opening up Second Street, and a lot of people are parking and coming out those alleys.
Right.
It would seem to me have a great deal of positive impact here. So if I understand the motion correctly, what you want is?
What I need a motion for is, two things.
Yeah.
I need a motion to allow the lights that will go in that alley to be hooked to our street tree circuits, and that means the city will pay for it, but it's minimal, 'cause it will be LEDs, like, similar to what's on the trees.
We'll pay for the power, but not the lights.
Pay for the lights. ADC's gonna get the lights, we pay for power. City crews would hang the lights.
Correct.
But we would need to get agreements also with all the property owners to, to two things, to attach to their buildings those lights, but also to do that paving in there. So I need a motion to include both of that if council is ready to proceed.
I will, I will make that motion, and then I have a follow-up question once it's seconded.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion?
Does the motion include negotiating with, or is that gonna be a second?
That's part of, that's the second part of the motion, is to enter into agreements with property owners about the, about the?
The paving.
The paving.
Well, and that's where, that's where my clarification is. That is property owners that own Second Street and own King Street, and possibly?
Only thing on King is actually the same one that comes at the end of that alley behind Second and, and Main.
But those are the property owners.
So there's one, two, three, four, about eight, about eight property owners we would have to get agreements with.
And it goes down as far as Starnes.
Past Starnes, that alleyway all the way to First Street.
So we're talking about that whole alleyway, okay.
If everybody can get on board now.
Right. I just wanted a clarification, that was, that we were talking about sort of making an L shape.
Yeah, okay, I'm with you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Chris, would you bring the other Chris back in?
I went and got Martha in. Martha, get the microphone.
Yeah, I, just to tag on to that, I, I really appreciate what y'all are doing and getting the people involved in this process that, that we started, and that's what we need. We need is, you know, the citizens look to us at the same time we're trying to do all that we can, and we have limitations, unfortunately. But when the public sector comes in and starts buying into this stuff, then I think we're moving in the right direction. Our citizens are looking at it and say, yeah, there's an opportunity here. Things are happening, and if we can continue with that positive attitude, I'm excited to see what's going to happen.
Yeah, me, too.
But thank you very much. Coming around the table, Mr. Ferris.
I don't have anything there.
Mr. Townsend.
No comments.
Ms. Hughes.
No comments.
Mr. Aldridge.
No, sir.
Ms. Hall.
No, sir.
Mr. Dry.
No, sir.
Mr. Whitley.
Oh, man, I will do it again. I'll take your...
30 seconds.
Just real quick, I just wanted to, for your information, I went to a school meeting the other day. Dana, Senator Jenicki asked me to come because I'm on the RPO, and they're looking at doing a fixed bus route, bus route in Albemarle. They're not going to come this budget year, but they're going to come next budget year. So probably later, before the end of this year, they'll come and do a presentation to show you what they're talking about. But it'll be a fixed route with the ability to change it a little bit, but they've got to get the whole plan put together first. So if you hear anybody talking about that, they're working on that over the next few months, and will be coming to, to talk to us and the county commissioners at some point.
Mr. Bramlett.
Two very quick things. One is, as you all know, Pat and I pick up trash a lot, and just, just that riding around town, I'm not sure we realize how much activity there is in Albemarle. Traffic, shopping, business going on. There's a lot going on in this town, probably a lot more than we realize, and, and in conjunction with that, to just make public what I tell you guys individually, we got a lot of trash in this town. I wish we could do something about increasing our pride, that people would want to have that stuff picked up around their businesses and that sort of thing. I don't know how to do it, but surely there's some way that we could increase the pride and get, get some of that stuff off the street. It looks awful. Open your eyes when you drive around. You have a tendency, we all do, to, when we're going somewhere, we don't look around us, but look around you and just look at what our streets are like and our yards and our businesses. It, it's terrible. Thank you, thank you.
The Central School Auditorium is now complete and is available for anyone who would like to rent it for a event or a concert. It is available. Having said that, we also are allowing people to sponsor seats in the auditorium. And there's $100, you get your name put on the seat. Does not give you rights to the tickets or anything when the events come up, but it does allow you to sponsor the seats in the auditorium and help the city with some of the money it's costing to upgrade that. It was a lot larger project than we thought to upgrade that, and a considerable amount of money was spent. So we're hoping that would be well-used and encourage people to come forward. Go to Parks and Recreation, they are booking that center, so anytime someone has something, please come to us and look for it. We would love to have anything we can get in that building. Yes, sir. Comment, since we're doing that, why don't we look to have like a grand opening or something to, to make the community aware of what's going on, show off the facility because it belongs to the, belongs to the citizens. Exactly. And, and do a little marketing, if you will, and awareness building, and give it some time in the newspaper and the radio so that hopefully we could build, invitations to like the talent company, U.A.R.E. players, and of course, anybody like to come. It's, it is a beautiful facility, and it was really close to being torn down, so I'm glad we were able to save it for you. I would love to see us have some kind of a video or something we could show that night, so, just to show the video system in use, so. And I do not see Parks and Rec here, so we would love, I'll direct it at Christina. Would you get with them and see what you can put together that we can show? It can show over and over, but something we can show, maybe the different areas of the city or different parks and all the things we do. Anything we can do to put that up there and promote ourselves and promote that. I know the only thing we'd like is some touch-up paint, and we're, we're ready to go, and I think that can even occur after someone rents it if they so need it.
An open house or something.
Yeah.
Really, that'd be fantastic.
Absolutely.
And since the mayor's brought this up, I just want to give him public thanks for something he's helped me do in the last week and a half. I have had the opportunity to acquire a nice baby grand piano that I was going to either give to Central School or give to the senior center.